On top of rules that already exist.
So I think the design of this, and I know it's not hitting you guys well. I think the design of this is to establish agreed upon rules of emergent situations. So that when they're, it's basically planning ahead. When certain situations arise, what are we gonna do? Oh, Selectman Gulat's running fifteen minutes late. Can we, we're just gonna automatically hold the meeting. We just have those rules specified. And it won't always be, you know, the three of you potentially being here. So this might be a nice basis for the town. So I totally understand where you're coming from. I think language matters in documents like these. Wordings matters. It's not just semantics. And it does take some time. My only comment while I'm speaking is that there's no public input listed under item 3G. And we love public input.
Yes.
And we need to just keep that in there.
That's not good.
But I find great value in things like this because it is agreed upon rules of the three selectmen sitting there. And they can change every year or at however often they want. You wanna look at them every month? Something that's not working out, you know, if you want.
I wanna know how, she's been awfully quiet, Selectman Gulat. What do you think?
I don't understand the need for the rules. All of a sudden, here we are in two thousand and eighteen, and these have been drafted. I mean, if a meeting becomes disorderly or someone becomes disruptive and you have to call the police and say that person has to be... I've sat through a town meeting.
Yeah.
That somebody was removed and held after being warned three times to stop disrupting the meeting. The moderator doesn't even use a gavel. He doesn't raise his voice. He taps with a pen. It's, so even though there may be irate people in the audience, after he warned him, warned him, he just said, "Constable, please come forward." And the gentleman was held because the moderator wanted to explain to him how the meeting is conducted. And my understanding is the person actually apologized for his behavior. But what I'm saying is, why are we getting so structured when it has not been necessary in the past? We have not had people that are so disruptive, we've had to call the police and have them removed. We've, our town meetings have gone well. And I remember meetings even before the current moderator.
This is more about how we're gonna conduct.
I know that. But what I'm saying is, there are rules in place. And I, I, well, the one thing you picked up...
Some of them aren't, some of these aren't in place though.
If an activity of normal occurrence dictates, what does normal occurrence mean? My only concern is, we operate under normal circumstances unless an emergency arises. And if an emergency arises, it's all covered in the open meeting law and we just do what it tells us to do. Boom, boom, boom. And we can call a meeting instantly almost to address the issue. So I, I just think it's unnecessary regulations. I, I don't think...
It's not intended to put, to be more restrictive. It's just simply intended to put, put it on the table so that we all agree this is how we'll conduct our meetings. That's all.
But I feel like we're already agreeing because we're all abiding by cushions.
No, we're not.
And in the absence, Robert's Rules of Order.
Well, we're not. That's, that's one of the problems too, but that's a different issue.
My other issue with 3G, just one last thing.
Yep.
If an individual selectman gives notice that they'll be late for a meeting at the chair's discretion or by majority vote, well, if someone's late, majority vote means unanimous.
No.
Correct?
Well.
Yes.
No, it's, it's, you need a quorum of those present voting. So yes, two votes. If a person, if I'm late and I call in and say, "I'm stuck behind, whatever. I'm gonna be there, but don't wait for me. Just go ahead. Go with the meeting." Then the meeting gets called to audio. Only need two people. You don't even need a vote. And it could be said, "Mrs. Gulat called in, she's gonna be late. She'll be here, but we're gonna start this meeting. We're gonna start through preliminary things." And quite frankly, that's when you can go to the, and follow the rule that says, okay, here's an item. You know what? We should wait for her to show up. So let's take such and such out of order. Motion, second vote. We're gonna take agenda item, whatever it is. All right? And, 'cause if you look at tonight's agenda, there's a lot of stuff that if one of us were coming in late tonight, we could do that so routine, like all those cuts and stuff. And we could say, "We can hold for discussion, this particular item, 'cause we should have the full board." That's what I think.
I mean, I just think it should be an expectation so we all agree on what's gonna happen. I'm, I'm not, obviously you guys aren't in favor of it, so let's not, let's not waste any more time on it.
Well, I will, again, eighty, eighty-five percent of this, we're already doing and I'm gonna keep doing. So I appreciate you taking the time to do this. And I think a lot of this, I'm okay with, but I'm just not gonna vote on it, that's all.
Okay. Strike it.
The AC unit we are tabling.
Can I, could I just ask you a question?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Under five, this is C. Was, that should not be there?
Correct.
There's no item really.
Should not be there.
Okay, fine.
I did, I mean, if for documentation purposes, I did talk about the boards and departments officially moving to Old Town Hall. That was just FYI to everybody that if you're looking for those departments, you need to go to that building.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
We don't have our tunnel yet.
Mr. Chairman.
Just kidding, there's no tunnel.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Madam Administrator. Mr. Chairman, before we move on, I did just wanna ask, I know a lot of the sections that, from the policy manual that we didn't vote on can reference the Rules of Order. What are we gonna do going forward to fill those gaps?
I will revise my recommendations accordingly.
All right.
Okay, let's move on. Anti-harassment policy, I think, oh, go ahead.
Ta-da, we're back. Anti-harassment policy. This has been hanging in, in Town Hall for everyone to peruse if they'd like. The, I guess, time for public comment has lapsed. We've reached out to all of the department heads, all of the union. We did, we got some great feedback. The firefighters' union gave us some feedback. The highway union gave us some feedback. And then the library director gave us some feedback, which was great. So we've included all of those. You've read it, we posted it. You had it here in front of you. We posted it. Because it's long, we gave a little extra time. Part of this policy, we are now going to disseminate this to every employee. They need to sign off that they received it. And that is their consent that they are going to promote a anti-harassment or a harassment-free workplace. And it will be distributed every year.
Did we actually vote the policy? Or you got all the feedback and we posted it? And I think it's been posted for how many weeks? I think we have to vote to accept this.
That's, that's what this is here for now.
Okay, all right, fine.
Before we vote, if it's okay, Mr. Chairman, I also wanted to add, to your point, Madam Administrator, this has been posted online for a while. I also believe we emailed it, mass email, which reaches, you know, over five hundred people. So I'm prepared to act this evening, if my colleagues are.
You wanna make the motion, then we will.
Absolutely. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the anti-harassment policy as prepared this evening.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? If none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Can I suggest if you could, could sign that?
Do you wanna, do you wanna get the date, everything done in the front?
She can do that. We can sign it and she can just attach a new...
I can type it.
Okay, I'm good with that. Let me sign this one?
Before I...
Whatever, it'd be the third or fourth page.
Yeah, I got it.
And just as an, oh, I'm sorry. I'm just saying, as an FYI, we've started a new policy binder so that we can keep track if you guys need...
Which ones are real?
Exactly. What we've, our progress. So that's started. Karen has it.
Okay.
I just, I would be remiss if we moved on from this and I didn't thank you. You were working on this since you got here. You stuck with it. I'm sure it was infuriating that it wasn't just approved within a couple of weeks, but I wanted to thank you for your due diligence. And I think that this will go a long way and we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I just wanna add, I wanna thank all the departments that cooperated and responded. Because if it was all put together and no one responded, you wonder, does anybody support it? So that's good.
So thank you very much.
Very good work. Thank you, everyone.
Okay, let's go on to new business. Invoice for addition of Eagle Scout theme to the town's NAPGEO. And this is, well, why don't you explain it?
I'm sorry. Owen Conti was an Eagle Scout that came before you, handful of, actually, handful of weeks ago. I feel like I've been here longer. Sorry. And part of, well, what his Eagle Scout project was, was identifying veterans' graves and having a layer added to GIS. So we have reached out to our GIS mapping company. And there is a slight fee, to me, this is nominal, for what the project is. It's five hundred dollars. And we would just need a vote of the board. Where this was an Eagle Scout project, not necessarily driven by a town function, just a vote of you to go forward with that for Mr. Conti.
Before we vote on this, if it's okay, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to say, it, obviously it was not like done by a town official. However, this was done in conjunction with not only Mr. Ferry from the Highway Department, but also Mr. Hershey, our Veterans Services Officer. So even though it wasn't performed by somebody who works for the town, it was for the town.
It's great benefit for the town.
And we appreciate their effort. I mean, marking all the veterans' graves in town is insurmountable task that I think will be appreciated by many for generations to come.
Yeah, and my understanding is this is sort of an add-on, 'cause the project came out so well, they said, "Let's put it wherever everyone can look at it." So I'll make a motion that we approve payment of this invoice for APGEO for the mapping of veterans' graves in the community cemetery, I believe is the cemetery.
Second.
Any further discussion? If none, all in favor?
And should we say where it's gonna be paid from?
Professional, technical.
Okay, selectmen's professional technical. Yeah, I'll add that, Karen.
And give me the authority to sign this?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
I second that.
All in favor say aye.
I'm glad they're recorded.
Sorry, you might wanna call it again.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And, oh, I, I know, we kinda dropped that in your lap. And I just wanted to say, you did a really good job of making sense out of probably nothing that I told you that made any sense, so.
I have a little help from Carol, actually. Thank you, Carol. Carol helped point me in the right direction. Serpide is our next thing here, item, excuse me. Serpide, you have actually signed this contract. But because we now receive funding from DLTA, the contract's a little different. So just seeking authorization for the chairman to once again sign this. For those of you at home, just a little refresher, Serpide is working on an open space and recreation plan that will also be in conjunction with our housing production plan. And we'll just get all of our plans up. And once you have plans, you qualify for grants and all that good stuff. So they're very important to have.
Now, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we authorize you to sign this district local techno, technical assistance form with Serpide as described.
Second.
Okay. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is a recommendation from the Dayton School Building Study Committee. I've been an ad hoc member of this, of this committee. And so, let me, I guess I'll, I'll read it. This is from the, to the Dayton Board of Selectmen. We write to give you our voted upon recommendation regarding the Dayton School Buildings. We thank you for the opportunity, the opportunity for civic duty. Our committee will no longer meet as we feel that the low recommendation is the best entrance of our town in schools. The Dayton, this recommendation is follows, the Dayton Building, School Building Study Committee recommends that the town of Dayton and the, in the Dayton-Rohoboth School District engage the Massachusetts School Building Authority to plan for the future needs of the Dayton Elementary and Dayton Middle School. And I think what, what kinda came about during this committee, they did a wonderful job and I commend everybody for their, their hard work on it. It really came down to the fact that, really, we're not experts on what school needs are. And although we made some projections and stuff, it really needs a more professional engagement. And the Massachusetts School Building Authority is, is the ones that do this kind of thing. So I think we'd be in a, would be a disservice to the town if the committee made recommendations because, like I said, we're not engineers, we're not school administrators and so.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the recommendation of the Dayton School Building Study Committee and forward this information on to the Regional School District School Committee.
Second.
I just wanna comment also that the assignment that this committee was given, my personal opinion, was too convoluted because it was not only deal with the space issues we got today and into the summer and come up with something long-term. That's not how you do a study.
No.
You know, two separate paths.
It's a very complex issue too, because it involves programming, it involves facilities. So I'd like, maybe we could add to that. I think we need to send a, a letter back to the superintendent.
Well, that's what I meant by communicate too.
Regional District.
Yes.
Right. Okay, okay.
Before we move on, I also just wanted to say, in, not so much in defense of this board, but when we appointed, formed the committee and then appointed the members, I really think the intention was to do it long-term. And then circumstances happened and then it became also a short-term fix, which obviously they're not equipped to do. So I'm happy to accept this recommendation as well tonight.
Okay. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great.
Okay, requests by the Spanish Church of God to waive the fee to install a new sign.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the request by the Spanish Church of God to waive the fee to install a new sign at 207 Main Street.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we have a road cut permit for Columbia Gas at 218 Rose Terrace. That type of work is a gas, a grade-one gas leak repair on, on service. Work was completed on 11718.
If it was a leak, we hope it's done.
Yeah, I hope they didn't wait.
If it's emergent, they, they do act now and do a permit later.
So let's...
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the road cut permit for Columbia Gas at 218 Rose Terrace.
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have another road cut permit for Columbia Gas at 400 Main Street. Is this to replace a gas service line?
No.
I'm sorry, I got the wrong one.
Yep. This is for grade-two-plus gas leak repair on Main slash Service. So that's what, the 400 Main Street is. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the road cut permit for Columbia Gas at 400 Main Street.
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
I'm confused.
Before we act on 7G, I just need a slight clarification. On our agenda, it says it's for a road cut permit at 130. The actual documents from Columbia Gas show 160. So is it 130 Main Street or 160?
It's gotta be 160, 'cause it's the only place you could get...
That's the correct one?
Which is 160.
Okay, no problem. Do you have anything you wanna? This is for a grade-one gas leak repair on service at 160 Main Street. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the road cut permit for Columbia Gas at 160 Main Street.
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay.
I'm glad to see they're doing some of these leaks, 'cause we had problems that we had to kinda fight to get these things done.
Okay, we have a national grid electric service proposal for 1458 Somerset Ave. In Dayton. Enclosed Fine Electric Service Proposal for 1458 Somerset Ave. What is that?
I thought we did this.
That's the new police station. No, we did something else a couple of weeks ago.
We did overhead and underhead, underground or something.
This is something different.
So this is...
Oh, the air rights, that's right.
What is...
Okay, this is for the electric, correct?
Yeah, this is specifically for electric.
Okay, this proposal, accept, please sign and return enclosed copy. Upon receipt of your acceptance, you will then be billed under separate cover in the amount of $5,600, $5,769.62 cents. This work will be scheduled upon receipt of the signed service agreement, payment of invoice and completion of all responsibilities outlined in the attached proposal.
Look at the date on this, though. And there were dollars attached to the other one. This goes back to February.
I thought this is what...
We've talked about...
No, we just received that.
We just received...
They probably had to vote on it their own committee, I'm thinking. And that's why it took... Yeah, I know that. Yeah, that was definitely something different.
Did Mr. McGee sign off on this?
Yes, he did.
Yeah, that's probably why it took them so long to get it to us. Are you accepting motion, Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the National Grid Electric Service Proposal for 1458 Somerset Ave. in Dayton for the amount of $5,769.62 cents.
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. You okay? You all set?
Yep, you'll just sign this tomorrow.
Yeah, he will sign.
Do we have to approve, authorize him to sign that?
You just voted. He's the chairman, he's...
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the next item is the Serpide, appointment of Serpide Commission Member. Why don't you take it away?
So Serpide is a very valuable resource to us. We have them working hard on all sorts of endeavors, especially right now. So as part of that, we get to appoint a Dayton official or resident as a commission member. And they represent the board of selectmen in, you know, matters before Serpide. And it's nice to have somebody there because you maintain that relationship and you're told of different grants. And we're lucky, we have a great relationship with Bill, who keeps us very much in the loop.
He's Sandy, Mrs. Conady.
And Sandy, that's right. And actually, the whole group there, Mr. Walker, all of them. So anyway, it's nice to have a commission member because you can make sure that your stuff goes forwards along as well.
I thought it was Mrs. Culpa, Selectman Gulat.
But we haven't gotten any reports, so I'm not sure she's serving.
I've never worked with her on anything. I didn't know who she was.
Miss Conady has, has said she hasn't seen her.
What I'm, what I'm happy to see is, first, I know that, we were talking about this before. I believe the meeting night is a Wednesday night, so that eliminates this board. But you could pick a planning board member or some other. And I think that would really be good. What we need is somebody to attend and just give us a report.
Absolutely.
And let us know so we know what's going on. And if there are events we should participate in as a town or as a something, we do that.
Are you making, yeah, no, that was my question.
My recommend, we have some time, 'cause it's May 23rd is the appointment start date. So I can reach out to the planning board to see if there's a volunteer from that group that would like to serve so that we're not throwing them by something.
And it's not zoning board, but one of the boards that's involved with regulations and expansion and all that stuff.
Great.
So that's what I'll do. I'll do that. Thank you.
We have...
So, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna make a motion that we authorize the town administrator to look into and recommend a possible person for appointment to, as our representative to Serpide for a future agenda.
Second.
Would you like to, I'm sorry for discussion.
No, discussion.
Would you like to open this up to maybe the, if the public, if there's a member of the public that has particular interest?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, 'cause she's a member of the public.
Right.
Yes, yes. As long as they're willing to attend and at least let us know what's going on.
Although I will just say, and that's fine if someone from the public, I know Mrs. Culpa's daughter, I went to school with her. However, personally, I would love to see it be someone from either zoning or planning simply because of that background.
Absolutely.
They might be able to be a little more efficient, so to speak, when it comes to planning.
But I would, I would say we'll consider anybody. If you're interested, if you're interested in this, just get in touch with Karen in the selectman's office and we'll evaluate the request.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Need a vote.
Yeah, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Do you have any correspondence?
Thank you, Mrs. Culpa.
Thanks and appreciation.
Let's go to announcements. I'll just read them off again.
Do you want me to breeze through this?
Yes, if you would.
Thank you. I'm, I'm gonna read these pretty fairly quickly. I will make sure these are online and we'll email them as well, because I'm gonna go quickly. TACTT, Taunton Area Community Table Meal Center invites Dayton residents for lunch every Monday through Wednesday from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. There's also a family cafe dinner on Thursday from 4:30 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. There is no charge and no questions asked. All meals are served at the church hall of the former St. John's Episcopal Church at 378 Bay Street in Taunton, Massachusetts. In addition, breakfast is served from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. on the third, fourth, and fifth Saturdays of every month. Those breakfasts are prepared and served by volunteer groups in the area. TACTT appreciates the support of Dayton residents in their meat raffles held on the second Thursday of every month at Giorgio's Restaurant in Dayton. The annual town election will be held this Saturday, April 7th, from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. at the Dayton Elementary School. STEAM posium, S-T-E-A-M stands for learning and careers in the fields of science, technology, engineering, arts, and mathematics. Dayton-Rohoboth Regional High School is hosting an exciting free family event on Saturday, April 7th, 2018, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Dayton Regional, Dayton-Rohoboth Regional High School. Rabies Vaccination Day will be held on Saturday, April 21st, 2018, from 2:00 to 3:00 p.m. at the North Dayton Fire Station. It will be $12 per pet, cash only. I believe they're doing microchipping, which is $20, but check only. Clerk, Madeiras, town clerk Sue Madeiras will also be there issuing dog licenses as well, I believe. Those are either cash or check only. We will send out an email. The Dayton Historical Society has a few upcoming events. April 8th, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m., Paint a Stemless Wine Glass at Taunton Yacht Club, 2125 Water Street, Dayton, Massachusetts. Contact Robin at 508-944-9721. Refreshments and cash bar. April 22nd, Millikins Mill Village, A Radical History of the Mount Hope Finishing Company, from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. at Friendship Hall, 2036 Elm Street in Dayton. A lecture presented by Kelsey Murphy will also occur. April 28th, Spring Psychic Fair, 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., Taunton Yacht Club, 2125 Water Street, Dayton, Mass. This event will have psychic readings, craft vendors, baked goods, Dayton history and memorabilia, and a cash bar. To reserve space, call Patty at 508-436-3105.
Now, Mr. Chairman, I have an announcement. I'll give these, I'll pass these over to you. These will be available here at Town Hall. The Attleboro, Greater Attleboro Taunton Home Consortium has prepared new booklets. This explains how first-time home buyers can take advantage of up to $10,000 in assistance with down payment and closing costs. It also explains how a person who owns rental property could also participate in the program and get assistance with renovation and modernization of rental housing. So these will be available here at Town Hall. Anyone would like to come in or get info, it's all here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Have Selectman Reports.
Oh, and I just wanna give you a quick update. Last week, you authorized me to go to the Greater Attleboro Taunton Housing Meeting and to vote for the amendments that were required by HUD, and all of that took place. We did some quick budget reviews, we discussed the, the program and where we are with that, and everything is moving ahead as planned, based on what information you got last week. So that's, that's moving ahead.
Yes, I, I wanted to say, I attended the eighth annual Easter Egg Hunt. Town Administrator Aaronstein was also there. It was really fun. I almost got trampled by a C of children. You gotta be quick, moving out of the way. I just wanted to thank Mr. Reins, Mr. Rosa, and Miss, Mrs. Cody for putting on a great event. It was very well-attended, there were people and children coming out of everywhere to attend the Easter Egg Hunt. I think there were 2,000 eggs that were hid, they were gone in, they were gone in a fl- I think you had to barter to get eggs, didn't you?
I had to sort of, poor Kevin, I had to like kinda stand over him, but he got four.
Nice. So it was a great event. I think it's definitely something that really speaks to the character of Dayton, small town, big heart, so I just wanted to thank the Parks and Recreation Committee for continuing to host it, it's really a great event.
I would echo that, I would echo those thoughts. Great job, guys.
I got here shortly after 1:20 or so, everything was gone. It was just, it was like, whoosh, I saw a few people...
I saw the wall coming towards me.
There were like a sea of eggs on the field, right, 'cause you can't go, and then it was just, and done. I, it was like, I stood up and I was like, it's over.
It was two minutes.
It was a lovely, like, beautiful weather-wise, so they got a great turnout, and my kids, we hung out. Thanks for letting me participate, Dayton, take some eggs home. We hung out at the playground a little bit, and then, you know, got, had ice cream for lunch.
And the Easter Bunny, right?
And the Easter Bunny was there, we got the picture with the Easter Bunny.
So I can use a graphist picking up eggs?
No, I know, I kinda lost sight of him.
I was gonna ask who got the most eggs, you or him?
Yeah, my older son, Forney, cleaned up, he went to like a perfect little spot, but, no, it was a great time and a wonderful event.
I just wanted to add on to something, you reminded me of something, small town, big hot. When we were working on our group insurance for this year, we took an article to town meeting last year, and the people in Dayton did vote to agree to pay the same amount of money for retirees, the same amount of contribution, so that active employees and retired employees all receive the same contribution from the town of Dayton. There was an article in the Mass State Retirees Newsletter, and the caption talked about the whole thing, small town, big hot, and when you said that, I remembered that, so. There's, I don't know how many thousands of people around the country that are retirees across, from Massachusetts, municipal, state, county, whatever, but anyhow, Dayton got an honorable mention, it was a really nice article, so.
Okay, let's move on to acknowledgements, and I have a letter here from Primetime to the Board of Selectmen, and we are pleased to inform you that Primetime's received a donation in the amount of $30. As usual, all town, all donations are donated to the town accountant in deposit in the Primetime gift and donation account.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the anonymous donation in the amount of $30 to Primetime, with thanks and appreciation.
Second.
Y'all have a favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, we have any minutes?
No, no.
I wanted to apologize to my colleagues, the carpal tunnel has been preventing me from writing up those executive session minutes, but I'll get them done.
Okay, approval of warrants.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that the following warrants be approved. Number 48-18 in the amount of $85,334.65 payroll. Warrant 40B-18 in the amount of $189,681.79 accounts payable. All be approved.
Second.
Y'all have a favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, can we wait one second, we just need to get the sheet so one of us can make the motion to enter into executive session? Oh, you got it, okay.
Any other public input? If none, we're gonna go into executive session, and I thank you all for coming and hanging out with us.
We'll be in touch soon, Ms. Quinn.
I'm sorry, do you have something?
Can you give her your number, Leah, I don't even have your number.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, man.
Right, okay.
That was the letter we were waiting for.
Have you guys adopted a policy yet on this?
No, we, we were waiting for your letter was the next step, remember, from the meeting?
I'll get ahold of you probably next, next week. So we're, we're waiting for this, 'cause we hadn't, I hadn't seen this.
Yeah, we, we didn't have that.
What's it, a policy?
Oh, it's about...
This is his intent, letter of intent.
Oh, oh, okay.
Yeah, no, I'll get ahold of you next...